Okay, it's 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the council meeting for March 8th, 2018. It is 7:00 PM for the city of Albernette. I want to thank everybody for attending this evening. Just a reminder that if you haven't silenced any devices that you may have on your person, we'd ask you to do so at this time. So go ahead and call the meeting to order. The first thing it will be doing here in the city of Albernette is that we do the pledge allegiance. So I'd ask everybody to stand at this time. We'll conduct the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, our acting clerk is a little predisposed. I'll take care of the roll call for this evening. Councilman Mensen.
I'm present.
Councilman Sarason, are you there? Councilman Shantz.
Present.
Councilman Trump.
Here.
And the mayor is also present. We let the record reflect that we do have a quorum for this evening. The agenda is in front of you. There are not any amendments to this portion of it. I would ask for approval of the agenda that's in front of you.
I know.
Moved by Sarason.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mensen. There's no discussion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We will have a public hearing this evening where any concerns considering the, or to consider the FY18-19 municipal budget, clerk is present here. Record reflect, we do have a quorum. So we will open a public hearing at this time. Clerk, do you have the date in which the publication is posted?
February 24th in the Gazette.
February 24th, posted in the Gazette. This is the time and place for a public hearing. If there is anyone that wishes to make comment on the public hearing, they need to come forward at this time. You can state your name and address clearly for the record. And if you have any comments, we'd ask you to give them at this time. Seeing none, but no public comment. This will also be the time for any council members that has any comment for this public hearing. Seeing no comments from the public or from the council. Let the record reflect that the public hearing was held on this matter and that there were no comments, zero comments from the public or from the council. Can you reflect that please on the record? Thank you, clerk. All right. We have the record reflect that the public hearing was held on that matter with zero comments. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 032018, adopting the FY18-19 municipal budget. Moved by Mensen.
Second.
Seconded by Shantz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And you will file that.
Well, you probably better do roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do need a roll call to put it on there for the resolution. I'm sorry. Councilman Shantz.
Yes.
Councilman Mensen.
Aye.
Councilman Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Sarason.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Let it run away. Let's go. We do not have the sheriff present for the report at this time, so we'll leave that item as placeholder on number seven. They may be tied up with something. For item number eight, the mayor's report. I'll make this brief. I do want to just do a couple thank yous this evening that I was trying to get caught up with from the weather. Guy Trimble, you and John, thank you for everything you did over the winter months. I know that you guys were up early and doing a lot, keeping those roads clean for us. Much appreciated there. Also, I want to thank you for acting as our acting clerk. I know that you've put a lot of time and effort into that. And then although I will go over to Robbins and thank him for the mutual aid they've provided us to Liz and Lori in person to their council meeting once we get our clerk back hired, I do want to recognize them also. They've done a lot of assistance for us, not only with getting our budget done, but with also some day-to-day duties. So much appreciated out there. And then also I want to thank the council for all their assistance during this time and the hiring committee that has put in a lot of hours in getting the process done for hiring us a new clerk. So many thanks to those folks. So that completes my mayor's report tonight. Council members, anything you would like to say or report through your portions?
Mr. Mayor, just one thing. Once we do settle the city clerk, I would like to pick back up on the city website. It's kind of fallen off agenda, but it is a priority. And we have our current contract through June or July.
Yes.
So I've talked to Councilman Trump and I'll work on like a design document that we can all sit on and look at at that point.
Yeah, and I think this came up within the last few weeks. You'd had some contact with, giving the gentleman's name again.
Mike Givens.
Givens. And that he is aware that we're in a kind of an interim period.
Yes.
And he's ready to proceed, I believe, on that.
And he's willing to show us at any time. He's bought an actual notification system because he's had some response, wanting that for other websites as well. So he's ready. Found any time we want to show us again what he's got.
When I talk to him, he's just waiting for direction.
Yep.
And I hope he provides all that.
We may be ready as early as April, do you think, or not?
I think we can just, we can get ahold of him probably any quick as we get something drawn up.
Okay.
I think he's ready to take action. That's how I understand.
Very good. Other comments from council members? All right, then we'll move on to item 10, citizen comments. This is the portion where citizens can make comments on agenda items. So if you see an item on the agenda, or previously when the agenda was posted, that you'd like to make comments on, this is the time and place for that. If you wish to make comments on any agenda item, just state your name and address clearly for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address the council on any agenda items. Does any member of the audience wish to address the council on agenda items? Yes, sir?
Any comments on those things I addressed in last council meeting?
Mr. Hill, would you state your address also? Not everybody that sees the recording knows exactly where you're at.
One 417 Montart.
Thank you. Yeah. Your previous items that you talked about, as I recall, sir, you'd talked about the space south of town that we addressed at the time. Okay, refresh my memory then, sir.
How about the handicap accessibility?
Yep. We're talking about your sidewalks, I believe.
Markings for the lot lines?
Yep, that was, I believe, two meetings ago where you'd asked about the markings on the lot lines. And I believe we'd addressed that. That's where the contract had stated that they would put anything in that was there prior to, which was what was in the contract. And I believe that was addressed in the previous meeting. If the lot line was there before, that they would make sure they recognized it. If it wasn't, it wasn't in the contract that they had to go in and find all those.
They were all there, clearly marked.
Okay.
You know. I'm having some settling up there. Is the town going to do something about that?
Okay, that's a new topic with the settling, but I'll be happy to take notes on that as well. Can you advise, I believe you're on the north side of the street, and so on the east, west side, south, can you give me the area in which your house? You're referring to your property, sir?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
On the north side.
On the north side of your home?
No.
Would it be on the north side of the sidewalk or the south side of sidewalk? Is that what you're talking about?
It's on the north side of the sidewalk.
On the north side of the sidewalk? Okay, so between your sidewalk and your residence?
Settling is between the street and my property.
Between the street and your sidewalks, sir? Is that where the settling is?
That's where the settling is.
Okay, I'm sorry. Street and the sidewalk. And that's directly in front of your home?
Oh, yeah.
Is it anywhere else, do you know of, in that area? Or is that nice around here?
I didn't check the rest of the street out. I can. I figured if somebody helps us, yeah.
Very good. All right, I will take a look at that, and I'm sure city maintenance will also take a look at that. Are there other items that we can address for today, sir?
That's fine. What about the handicap accessible?
This was the sidewalks you were talking about, is Councilman Trump.
This building.
In this building.
This building here.
Yes. We recently renewed our lease. I've asked that we talk to the lease owner for the items within this building, and that it will be addressed.
Did he give a space or?
I have not talked into that gentleman personally. Acting clerk will address that.
Gary has indicated that as soon as the weather gets warm enough that the door can stand open all day, he's putting a new door in. It'll be addressed at that time because the door needs replaced too. Not necessarily for ADA, but because it needs replaced. So that's when it will be addressed.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Any other items, Mr. Hill?
No.
Any comments from council? Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. All right, this is item number 11, citizen comments on non-agenda items. Any comments on non-agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the written reports. Item number 12, public works. I know you're in a dual role there, but any, other than your written report, any items on public works?
No.
Very good, thank you. At this time, we'll do item 12B. This is the fire department report. Prior to receiving your report from Chief Graham, I would like to say that on April 7th, I know that you have an event that's going on at the fire department. This includes some type of food and everything else. You talk about it, but it also has a silent auction and things like that. I want to reiterate our commitment to you for a new fire station and that process. I apologize that it's been delayed somewhat with the special election and with the hiring of a new clerk. But again, my personal commitment as well as the council and the city that is behind you with that effort. So if you go ahead with your report and then address that item.
Yeah, we're here for the grill. Burgers and brought some hot dogs. They make things in Coleslaw. We got several silent auction items. Four to seven at the fire station on the 7th of April.
Very good. And we can get that on the website, I'm sure. Okay, all right, good. Any other items you'd like to discuss for your report?
I, yeah, especially next week when I got some stuff I need to purchase and I haven't got it written.
Okay.
I just got a tax and sales on the prices today, so.
Questions or comments from council for reference report? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have the items here. If there's anything that needs to be added, believe, to that other than the $50?
We're taking the $50 check out. Steve could not get to some training that we were paying for, so we don't need, don't want to pay him. And then also Bill came in late for $147 for some fire department supplies.
$147?
Or training, training.
For training?
Sorry. Yeah, so we'll, I'll have Lori take care of that in the morning, so.
Any other financial items for consent?
I have a question. On this list of bills, what's high, A and U?
Iowa Municipal Utilities.
Which is?
It's one of the groups, like IRWA sponsors the conference that I was just at. Iowa Municipal Utilities is another.
Training and deal, water and sewer then?
Yeah, it's not, no, it's not training. It's annual dues to get access to their system.
Okay.
That was a system that the clerk uses more so than I do. And they've got a lot of more clerk-driven stuff, as well as public works too, but.
Other questions concerning consent? Seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Moved by Sarason. Seconded by Shantz. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. That takes us on to new business. The first item is to discuss sign designs from the Pirate, I'm sorry, Collaborative, and possible motion will recognize Jordan. I believe you were going to speak first.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so Jordan Smith, I'm Abby Greer, and we are doing the Welcome to Albernette signs. The, not the championship ones, it was like right by the vet, but the one right outside the foundation, by the tree. So before we met with Guy, we went around the community and interviewed people of what kind of sign they had in mind. And then we came up with four ideas. And then we met with a vinyl company, Lamar Advertising. I don't even know about it.
Yeah, they're the ones that initiated the plan. Todd Wagner said the company will basically donate these two coverings. It's billboard material that they will put the design on, stretch it over the existing sign and strap it together. It's a two-to-three-year product before it would need to be replaced. And at that point, if we wanted to continue with that sign, we might have to purchase. But this one will be donated as part of their community outreach program, so. So that's where we, these young ladies come into play, is we got to have something to put on the sign. So I asked them to try and get us some designs and have you take a look. See if there's anything that.
So we came up with four. And the one that they thought of like the most was the Pirate. And we haven't ran these through Photoshop yet, but we're getting to it. We just have to learn how to do it. And then we'll submit it to Lamar Advertising, which is the vinyl company.
These are all the designs, but this one here is the preference?
Yes.
Very good.
Because after we met with Todd Wagner, we went around Albernette and interviewed them, the community again, and they chose that one. There's only one sheet to that one.
Okay, and these are all student designs?
They're our first design.
Now, as I recall, this is the first of our joint initiatives with Pirate.
Yeah, we've done, we've worked on some projects. And when the project, the Wellmark Grant, we worked together on that project.
Oh, they did their survey?
Yeah, they helped with the survey and tried to figure out what the community wanted. And so, yeah, and we're looking forward to more too. I've met with this group more than once, not necessarily about this project, but about others, trying to find a way for the city to use their skills and abilities while they're learning as well. So anything we can come up with, and I told them that marketing the city is something that we don't spend a lot of time on, but I feel is a necessary ingredient. So that's kind of the way we've been trying to push that collaboration with them, so.
This one's right outside the high school office and also outside the foundation. So that's just something to keep in mind. And out of these four designs, do you know which one you guys prefer?
I like that one.
I think I saw that one in the Pirate. Where's the other two? I saw that one.
Oh, is there one that you didn't see?
I saw two. Did I see the other one? Clarify, is this, which sign is this?
The wooden signs that got put up, they have.
Plexiglass on them?
Yeah, with the plexiglass on it.
Green?
Yes, and that you can, you know, unless you're concentrating, you can barely read. So we were looking for a little, a little color, a little splash coming into town so people knew what town they were coming into. Little, little, I told them, be bold so that we can, you know, see what's going on. And it's not a permanent sign either. We can take it down. What I do is take the plexiglass off because it's spaced out from the wood. Just take that off, store it, make sure it's still able to be, to go back up, put this wrap on it, and we'll look at it for a year. And if we don't like it, we'll come up with another design. And depending on what Lamar's price is, maybe we put one, a new one up every year to keep things interesting, you know? I don't know what the charge would be, but the first one's free, so.
Well, I think you've got good branding. You've got logo and color in there, and so it definitely matches the city. So you did a good job with it, so.
We just haven't run it through Photoshop yet because we are just learning about how to do that.
Sure.
Did you get that figured out, Chief Graham?
So one thing I'll add to what they're already sharing is, I don't think we've talked to you yet about this, the team, and we would be curious to know more. These are, these are concepts. What would you like in a design? So if you had to narrow it down to five concepts or five ideas, maybe it's color scheme, maybe it's certain verbiage, certain, you know, what couple of these designs have that Pirate logo. And we are, school's a very focal point of the community, but is that something that you want to try to tie into the entire community?
I would think that you would want her for month, a purple or gold, or a, for the color myself.
Yeah, I think that's good branding.
Yeah, because that way, I mean, everybody at town recognize us as that. Like, that's one thing that we do try to.
It's a mat, right?
Yes.
What size is this? Give me the dimensions of this rough form of this sign.
I measured it too. You guys remember?
It's not that big.
No, we really.
It's kind of like.
I don't need it inches, but we're talking.
Is it more than?
Three and a half by five maybe, or something like that.
Okay. All right. And when this original sign here that has the Pirate logo, was it, was there going to be color to add it to that in Photoshop when you ran it through? Okay, all right.
Show me the one that I liked again, please.
And that's the one that's out of the foundation on that.
And the sidewalk is.
Can we somehow put the Pirate logo on that?
We could like put it right here.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
I guess the question I have is, do we want all the signs to be the same or should we have a variation of? That's just, just a question. I'll leave you guys to.
Never thought of that.
Think that through.
That's true. We got two signs to work with. Put one design one direction, one the other way.
I mean, if we've got more, you've already got one in two places, right? That was just a thought. Think what. Come on with the dipper.
And I think it needs to be somewhat simple. You go through it, go past it pretty quickly. And so can't have a little bit of writing.
Right, large print. Large, you know, I'd crowd the size of the print as much as could.
Yeah.
Do we have a sign on the east or west side of town?
No. No.
I'm just thinking maybe the school would like to build this one.
Well, shop class along with, with.
The design.
Yeah, tie that all together. Only issue there is got to check into the county rules, you know, about where placement and that property owner and stuff. But it's still doable. I think one of our, one of the school board members lives the first place out of town, east now, I believe. So maybe it'd be easy there with a school board member living right there.
Fire department.
And then, yeah, and then.
That would help tie that together.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we can look into that for the next round. But do you guys, you're looking tonight for what direction to go, right? What, so I guess they're looking at you to say, that design is good. We're going to, we're going to go ahead with it.
Well, I think, I think we're in agreement that these two designs are nice. Maybe you could work both of those up. I guess, I think we'd like to give you some latitude too because you guys are doing a lot of this work too, you know, to have some decision power in it.
And would there be anything you would change about in your sign? Either, I know he said he wanted the Pirate on this one because this kind of like goes with the foundation and the high school. So would there be anything you would change about the Pirate?
Maybe a simpler text that's kind of swirly and is all going to blend together.
More blocky, that it'd be easier to read and kind of bold, maybe.
So maybe one design on one side of town and the other on the other?
Are they going to be too good?
Well, unless, unless Lamar says it's going to be, it's going to be one or the other. And I guess that.
Our meeting, as you can imagine this too, it sounded like he was pretty open to multiple designs.
Okay.
That's what was part of the conversation.
Okay.
Not the one with the Pirate, but the other one you had. If you add more to that, is it getting a little too busy for, I mean, you've got.
Relatively small space with people driving 45, 50 miles an hour.
And the other thing, next to both of those, we already have, you know, the state signs starting with the state, which say home of the Pirates, so, or.
That's true.
Something, Pirate Country, something along those lines. So you may be able to strike that from that one to open up some space as well.
Let's keep this messages.
I think, does that say home of the Pirates on it?
Just welcome to.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so you can take that off because it's kind of, it's already on the sign, the sign that's next to it.
The next sign you see, yeah. Well, I don't know if you are still clear where these signs are. This thing is way out by the complex. It's a wooden sign, it's a wooden sign with an arvivita behind it.
Isn't it about halfway up to the pumping station?
Yeah. Oh, no, it's more than that. It's past the lift station. It's way out by the.
I thought it was closer than that.
Right, right across the road from Leland Osmondson's house, that house on the corner at Old Kloss Road. Yeah, it's just a little bit south of Old Kloss Road, the gravel road. And then the one to the north is quarter mile or whatever, yeah, north of town, so. So, yeah, there'll be a lot of distance between that sign and the one that has all the championship stuff on it, so. Well, I would say, how about you guys do your Photoshop thing and get, taking all this information, get the sign that you feel like you're hearing and email it to me, and I'll distribute it to council members. And unless somebody throws me a big no way, we'll just go ahead that way. Is that all right with the council?
Is this process that you're talking about, is that real expensive to do?
We don't do that at the school?
What, Photoshop?
Yeah.
No, it's on a computer.
And we have, we have access to it.
Okay.
So it's not expensive.
Okay. It costs us a lot of additional.
Terrific.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you so much. I appreciate your efforts on that.
Thanks a lot, you guys.
Yeah, very good. All right, have a good evening. Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to item 14B, discussion of the notice of the state audit. And possible motion will recognize the clerk on this.
Okay. In your packet is a letter from our attorney after we reviewed the letter that came from the state about the audit. And he was suggesting that we pay the fee as we have done in the last several years. That does not mean we will be audited. It means that we will be thrown into the pool and may get an inspection, basically. I, my recommendation is that we follow our attorney's recommendation.
I don't see any harm in the audit. And that's his recommendation unless the council wants to do otherwise. Do we need a motion on this?
I say I'll make a motion.
And it's spending funds, right? It's $1,200?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Then we have a motion by Shantz to go through the, proceed with the state audit. Second, second by Trump. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item 14C, discussion of fuel cards for the fire department and public work vehicles. Vehicles and possible motion will recognize both the clerk and Chief Graham for this.
I've looked into Ride Express cards a lot because I'm familiar with it from my years in the trucking business, but also Robbins is using them for their fleet. They, they can set up cards, one card per vehicle. That card can be used by anyone that's listed. So Steve would get a four-digit PIN number. And if he's driving 136, he would go fuel it up, put in his PIN number, the odometer reading of the truck, he fuels it up. That's simple. You have to put limits on the cards. You can put, it's only can be used here, whatever. I checked with the lefties. They take Ride Express at both of their locations. Casey's in Center Point does not, but I, that was the lady that was running the cash register. She said they didn't. I'm going to look into Casey's a little bit more. But we talked about, a little bit about where you go. I didn't get ahold of anyone out at Otter Creek store, but at least we know you'll be able to fuel them up right here in town.
Yeah, we use them for the police department. We just put them in, like you said, save the receipt, turn it in.
Yep.
We mark it who did it, and they.
It's all accessible online. The charge is $2 per card per month. So if we, it'd be four fire trucks. And I would say, even though I've got a city credit card, we should put one in the pickup because the other bonus is we don't need to be paying fuel tax in anything that we're driving. And we wind up paying fuel tax on all the gas that goes in the pickup because we don't go through the trouble of the, but through Ride Express, we can be tax exempt. They take care of it. So just the savings alone on not putting taxed fuel in all of our vehicles. Pays the $2 fee.
You can associate that PIN back to the billing system too.
Yes, you, everything is trackable online. You get online and you say, you know, if you are suspicious that a firefighter used that card to fill up their own fuel, you can look at that odometer reading and, and all that stuff fuel, you can look at that odometer reading and, and all that stuff and the time of day that it was used and all that. But the biggest thing to me, I don't think that's gonna happen, but the biggest thing to me is not paying any sales tax anytime you fill up our vehicles, because we don't have to, you know.
We're used to that.
We are tax exempt, so um, you save all that fuel tax and, and that's it right there. You know, that pays for any cost of the card. If, if there was one of the major oil companies' stations near us, it wouldn't even cost us anything. They are affiliated with Shell and ExxonMobil. If there was a Shell station right here, it would be zero cost to us because they have an affiliation. So they're getting their money because they're pushing us towards that oil company's station, you know, so. Unfortunately, we don't have that, but still, it seems pretty cheap.
You know, other than lefties, how else, I mean, where else do you fill up?
We did ones in Frederburg.
Once.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, but yeah, that was the one time we were needing fuel in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were doing on a, on a assist.
Yeah.
You know, long ways from home and running all night hauling water.
Yeah, and the guy, I mean, it's a small town shop, he just throw it down and sent the change bill. It's no big deal, but.
Yeah. Well, we have the capability too. If any of the firefighters need to fuel up where their, that card won't work and they will put it on, pay for it themselves somehow, surely the next day we can get them right back somehow, some way. So I'm not too concerned about that portion of it. Just bring us a, bring us a receipt.
It was just hard before, two guys had a credit card and they hardly ever showed up.
Sure.
They were always contacting you or sharing and say, hey, we need your part to fill up.
Yeah. This way, any one of the fire members, we just get a list from them. Everybody that's on the fire department gets a PIN number and they figure out how they keep that to themselves, or you know, keep it available to themselves so they can remember it or have it. And any one of the fire department can fuel that truck up. Nobody's looking for anybody with a card. Nobody's, you know, having any hassle. And Central City is probably the direction you go on more than anything. If I find out that Otter Creek takes it, you really are covered probably ninety-five percent of the time.
And we don't vote that off.
Yeah.
So that'll eliminate the hassle of keeping a receipt.
Yeah, really.
But you still should keep the receipt.
Still should keep the receipt, but I still think we can get, get to it online and get everything that we need to know through their system.
You know, I think hanging on to receipt if you're up fighting a fire isn't probably your highest priority.
Right, right. Yeah, if it is lost, we can get at it from the, the Ride Express portion of it. We don't have to.
Your bill, I shouldn't say the PIN number and you built track that person, did you?
These cards stay in the truck.
Yeah, just stay in the truck. One card per unit and then the PIN number is the only thing that differentiates who's fueling it up, so. I've got the direct line to call the guy and get it set up and he'll walk through all the, the parts and pieces and, and get all the information. If anything throws up a red flag, I would, if you approve this, if anything throws up a red flag to me when we get in-depth into setting it up, I'll, we'll hold until next meeting and, you know.
So everybody in the fire department will have a PIN. Does the fire department keep that solely, or does that come to the city that if you wanna check who blocked the gas, you have the ability to figure that out too?
Well, I, I, yeah, I figure the, the clerk will be able to.
They should get it anyway with, because they're paying the bill.
Yeah, right.
So they should have access to all of them.
I think it's up to Steve to decide who.
Not everybody will get one.
The way Robbins PD does, if that card has a single PIN, it stays in each police car. You pull it out, you put the, then you hit the single PIN, you're done, print the receipt, sign it, and then turn it in. That's how they know who fuels. You want an individual PIN for every member?
That's the way the Ride Express guy said that they recommend doing it, is that each member that, that has, that can, is allowed to fuel, has their own PIN.
You'd have more accountability that way.
Right, because.
I don't care how you do it.
Yeah, just, it tells you that, that Steve fueled this truck today and Andrew fueled that truck day after tomorrow, you know, so.
I think Steve should decide who gets PIN numbers and who don't.
Yeah.
I mean, like my cadets don't get them. I mean, they can't drive anywhere.
That's for you to decide.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna tell you who gets them.
So you, you wanna motion on this?
Uh, I, yeah, I think if you wanna just move, some kind of motion to authorize me to, to go ahead and, and set up the Ride Express account.
Is there a certain term on this, or is it like any credit card that we could cancel at any time?
Uh, I'll find that out. I will find that out. We can, you can make that dependent on your motion, you know. If it's locked into some kind of term, I, I will not go forward unless it's a very short term, you know. No problem.
If there's no term, there's just no risk, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, you're not locked in.
Pleasure the council?
I'll make a motion that'll be, go ahead and look into getting the fuel cards.
Motion by Sean's.
I would second that.
Second by Sarahson. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Fourteen D, discussion of the twenty-eighty agreement for, with Marion for salt and other supplies and motion to approve. Recognize that counsel.
So on February twenty-second, the Marion City Council has agreed to enter the twenty-eighty agreement with us. Their council and clerk and mayor. So all we have to do is agree to enter into the agreement with them, sign the papers, I gotta bring it back to work with me. And then uh, beads got cheaper. I think I told you that's more than bulk now, so.
Paint supplies, beads, salt, even salt mixed with sand.
Yep, uh, they even will come up and stripe our streets, which like, no offense to you, but it would take Marion fifteen minutes to stripe our streets.
Nope, gotcha. Gotcha.
So.
I'm not opposed to that.
That gives the city the ability to purchase these things from Marion and contract with those services, but it doesn't require really anything.
No, we're not required to do anything. Uh, the other thing is, if not for good, we would have a tornado here. They'd probably send guys, equipment.
Cause then the pathway is done to pay them for, for their help and it's all set up. I don't know if you all know, but we have twenty-eighty with the county. Um, they have done like, they put the gravel on Old Kloss Road, which is our responsibility. They have shouldered for us, which I'll be asking them to do this spring, cause their shoulders on our paved roads heading out of town need it. They've, it's, you know, gotten pushed out, whatever. They buy gravel and bring it here and spread it on that road cheaper than I can go to the quarry and buy the gravel. Not even counting the freight, so. And it's gonna be the same with the paint and the, and the salt and the, just because of quantity.
Sure.
Do you feel the paint may be a better quality?
I think it is. Uh, it's Sherwin-Williams.
Yeah, and see, we're buying state bid paint right now, which is Innis Flinter.
Yeah, who knows, who knows that?
Like I was just saying to Bethany, traffic paint just simply doesn't lie. It's just water based. Marion paint's twice a year. It's just what it is. But there are some really low quality paints and Sherwin-Williams is usually a little better.
Did we receive the exhibit A? Did it just not make the packet? Do you know the stats of that?
Um, I don't a hundred percent know if it is, but I think what exhibit A would be is.
It's a price list.
The price list.
Have we, have we gotten that yet?
No, we have not.
Oh, for these items?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure, obviously, they're all going to be very reasonable, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I think if, if we would decide to purchase from them, then yeah, exhibit A will come with. So that's all. We just need a motion to move forward.
Yeah, requires a signature, something along.
By your.
We have a motion?
Yeah.
I agree we entered in the twenty-eighty agreement with she, uh.
Move by Trump.
I will second that.
Second by Sarahson. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I was told to abstain.
Uh, oh, sorry. Abstain, Mattson. Still have the quorum.
Thank goodness the rest of you showed it.
Yes, there was a yes. Okay, so we still have the, so passes fourteen E. Discuss possible purchase of property adjacent to the green space. Recognize.
Um, y'all have a map in your, in your uh, packet. It's the, the property outlined in green. I have asked Rex Naylor on multiple occasions if he was interested in selling and he finally got back to me with a number for that property. First of all, the reason for purchasing it would be to enhance our green space, more room for uh, in that vicinity for fire station parking. Should we ever build a community building, maybe as an extension of the fire department or whatever the case may be, just to square up the property. I felt like it was a, a good time to purchase it since we're looking at doing dirt work out in that area this spring. His price is fifty-five thousand for that chunk of ground. And basically what I need to know from you is, uh, should I go ahead and talk with him and possibly negotiate a little bit? I have an uninformation from John. There's not a ton of wiggle room in that number, but he feels like there is a little. And I guess I'd be happy. I guess I don't know, I need to know where you're at on it. I have gotten information from John as to how that number came about and why they feel that is fair. If you wanna hear that portion, I'd be happy to tell you. I guess I need to know where all you are at on that first.
Is he assessed value of the property?
I don't think it's, no, it's just a number that he came up with.
What is the assessment?
Oh, I, I didn't look that up. I'm sorry.
I thought if we do go ahead with this, we ought to get something to praise. We've got an idea what the actual market value is rather than what he's.
Yeah.
I like the idea of purchasing this.
But we need to know where to force.
Yeah, I don't wanna overspend.
I totally agree and I will do that legwork, uh, so direct and um, also, you know, try and, and just, it seems to work better to work through John with Rex. Things stay calm and uh, John knows how to handle him, so um, I can definitely try and find similar properties, get the assessed value.
I wonder if we should hire somebody to appraise this.
It's, it's, yeah.
I mean, we're talking, you know, we might spend a thousand bucks to get appraised, but you might, at least you've got a justifiable number to everybody else in town.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, just a few items that John brought up to me, just as you were formulating your opinion. If Rex would decide to do another twenty lot subdivision, he would probably go north of the one that's there, which is way away from this, but it's also been discussed on multiple occasions. He has thought about doing short extensions of the dead ends in his, his, and that would be one of them. I mean, if he put in three lots worth of street off the end of Willow, he would have six lots available for sale somewhere in the low to mid forties for price, just to give you an idea. This property we're talking about is two hundred and seventy feet wide by a hundred and twenty feet deep. So it is essentially, it could be three lots. Um, they are slightly smaller, yes.
Is this part of his?
He owns all that.
No, I mean, is this, that planted?
That, that old map behind Brian's head, it is plotted that far.
It goes all the way to the other side of the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then that means.
No survey work involved.
No, because it is a plotted piece. I mean, it's, it's not.
I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
Everybody understood that.
Sewer meter. Um, the other thing about this, and I don't really know how this is all set up as far as the fire station for sewer and water, but that might possibly be the fastest way to get sewer and water.
We have sewer and water out front.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, on Roosevelt.
Oh, yes, right here it is.
Yep. Um, but that being said, depending on how you lay things out, it could be access, let's say, fifteen years from now, you put in a little shelter house with a couple restrooms and a, maybe a kitchenette in it, in that corner away from your fire station. That may be the route to go with water and sewer for that property, very possibly, so.
So we'll leave that with interest pending some more information?
Yep, I'll work on it.
Item fourteen F, discuss lawn care bids and possible motion.
Okay, um, I got three bids. Norwegian Lawn Care, Greg's Lawn and Lynn Co-op Lawn Care. The bids are quite varied. Um, my recommendation would be Lynn Co-op. They, Greg's Lawn's bid for doing the areas that are established lawns is the cheapest of the bids. But we can only go as low as three applications, cause they have programs, bronze, silver and gold, and three is the minimum. Norwegian has the highest price for our already existing lawn. And he really, really wants to do four. I think I could talk him down off of four, but he really wants to do four, so he's really the high bid. Lynn Co-op is a little more expensive per application than Greg's Lawn on the, the established lawns, but he will do whatever we want. If we wanna do one application in the spring, just broadleaf and fertilizer and don't come back the rest of the year, he'll do it. If he wants us to do five, he'll do five. The other kicker with that is his price to do the broadleaf control out here in the hay ground by the lift station that, you know, to make the interest of town look decent, is half the price of what Norwegian had in his bid and Greg's won't even do it. They don't have the equipment. They don't even wanna mess with spraying that, so.
This last year, how many applications did we have?
I, the, uh, the Emerald Green Lawn Care was like a four application program and we kinda just let them run with it and they definitely were cheap, but I don't think we were getting the product we were paying for and the billing system was so messed up. That's why we chose to make this change. Cause it's not Rick McGraw anymore.
Right, now is four applications required?
No, I don't think we need, I don't think our soil in most of our areas would support four applications.
So it's maybe.
I'm thinking two to three, depending on the summer, how much rain we get.
Fertilizer, herbicide in one trip?
Yeah.
Second, be like a fall fertilizer.
Yeah.
Two trips might be funny.
Yeah, and we got a couple areas. I had him, uh, Lynn Co-op and, and Greg's, uh, or Norwegian did bid the whole area where we're gonna work on the green space separately, because there's no reason to spray that this spring. There's no reason probably to spray it midsummer, but maybe one application this fall. And again, same thing, same thing came out was that Norwegian was the high bid. Lynn Co-op was a little bid. Greg's did not include that area in their bidding at all. I asked him to, to put a number in there and he said, well, that's hard to put a number on something that's all piles of dirt and I don't know how much I'm gonna be spraying, so he wouldn't even give me the number. So despite the fact they were cheap on the established lawn, there was not much flexibility there.
Based on best value, your recommendation is?
Lynn Co-op.
Lynn Co-op.
Yeah, and they're local. They have an elevator location here in town. They're as local as we can get, so.
I never paid much attention, but is there a lot of weeds down here in that pasture?
Yeah. Yeah, we had it sprayed once last year and it cleaned it up a lot, but it, it wouldn't, it could be. Twice wouldn't hurt, but after we get it cleaned up, next year, just a spraying application might hold it just fine. It kinda depends on flooding, cause that tends to flood and that brings weeds. Do you know how that works?
Yes. Weeds are in on that. It's just real, realistic. The only thing we can do is keep the weeds down.
Exactly, exactly. Well, it made it look so much nicer once we got that old fence out there between us and the, and the vet clinic. It's just kinda hard not to try and make it look decent, you know. That helped immensely getting that old credit fence out of there, so.
Recommendation for Lynn Co-op?
Is this, this is a one-year?
Yeah, we could look at it again next year or if we're happy with them, we could just stick with them. We did that with, with uh, Irish Green for years. We just kinda automatically let it, let them keep coming. But when Rick was doing it, it, it was fine. He was getting it done and it was fine. I don't know if that's a motion item.
Wait, wait for one.
Uh, I agree we contract with Lynn Co-op to provide the uh, fertilizing and blowing control for.
Move by Trump for Lynn Co-op? Second by Sean's. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to item fourteen G. Discuss grading bids for green space and possible motion.
Uh, I've got two bids for getting the dirt work done out there at the green space. And both bids, I told them to include that area that we may attempt to buy, because even if we don't get it bought, I've talked with Rex enough to know that we could probably get a construction easement and go in there and make sure that we get flows right, so that we're not damming up water. And Handley's bid came in lowest at thirty-seven hundred and forty dollars, Pierce Tobin at forty-two eighty. Uh, I took both of them out there personally, showed them the project. I'm confident that they're bidding on doing the same amount of work. Handley's bid actually includes trying to get some rye seed or something on the, the field dirt pile. Once he gets it pushed into storage, which Pierce Tobin does not have in their bid, and that was something he added in on his own. So that makes it the, the best bid as far as I'm concerned. Yes.
Does that include this dirt out here east of town?
Yes, they will haul the dirt east of town to the, to the site. And I did not include it at the time, because I figured John and I could work on it. But I, when we get down to the final grade, I wanna haul our compost pile out there to help the fertility of this ground, cause it's not gonna be great. It's gonna be a little struggle to get it seeded, so, uh, and make it grow. But I would recommend, uh, Jeremy, he's told me to, he can start just as soon as the weather turns and, and push dirt.
Which one is that, Jeremy?
Handley dirt work.
Handley, that's a sixty-day bid. You think that will be enough?
Yeah.
It's good for sixty days, that's enough?
Yeah. Yeah, I told them we need it, we gotta be on the front of the list in order to, to get grass growing. The earlier we seed, the better. Yep, I told them we need it, we gotta be on the front of the list in order to, to get grass growing, the earlier we seed, the better. Otherwise, we might be stuck seeding grass in the fall, uh, if it gets too late into the spring, and he said he can do it right on it.
I would move we accept the bid from Handley Dirt Work. For the green space.
Motion by Councilman Saracen for accepting the work from Handley Dirt Work.
Sorry.
Second by Trump, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the motion carries. We're up to item fourteen H, discuss payment of accumulated vacation sick leave, the former city clerk. Uh, I do have an item in reference to this, the opinion, which I believe was also sent to all of you, at least on the district it was, uh, from the. Um, city attorney, he couldn't be with us tonight, his recommendation is that we pay that as, um, was, um. Put on her separation form, which I believe is two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-point-five hours. This was a discussion point because of, um, the maximum hours that she could, uh, have based upon accumulation and carryover. Which was two-hundred, uh, so we're, this, the, the talking point is thirty-seven-point-five hours, however, that was what was placed in the system. So, uh, we'll need, since it's expenditure funds to close it out, we will need, uh, a motion to pay that. Yes.
You confirm the hours of data tech?
They.
Can they do that?
Well, not really, I mean, they can run a report, but it's up to whoever's inputting, you know, the hours, you know, what, I, what I think happened was. The policy manual clearly states you can only carry over eighty vacation hours, I don't think that got adjusted. You know, i- if you got to July first, whatever was left in there, just got left in there, and then the new hours got put on top of it. And that's why that number is out of skew, in my opinion, unless I'm reading the, the policy manual wrong, but it pretty clearly states eighty hours. And then of carryover, and then she's at the hundred, was at the hundred-and-twenty hour level, so that's, and it's actually less than two-hundred, because she used some, I think it was.
You reported one-eighty-three.
Yeah, something like that, but it is what it is, I mean, the, the data tech system does say two-forty-five-point-five right now, but that's because Lori was, didn't. Know how we were doing things and didn't pull one vacation day out that she took in January. So, that's where the two-thirty-seven-and-a-half number comes from. Heard that one.
And then, and that's what Sharon talked about?
That's, that's what, when, when, yeah, when she was here with you two and she looked it up.
Yeah, on her, during the day that she retired, we pulled, uh, her current rate and what she had payable to her, based upon what was in the system, she didn't, she had sick time, of course, that wasn't payable out. She had no compensatory time, and then she had the equivalent of, of what I would call flex time or vacation time or whatever. And it was reported at two-forty-five-point-five, but she had used eight hours that week, and reduced it to two-thirty-seven-point-five.
Right.
Uh, and that was, she removed that number from the system. Now, that's inconsistent with, uh, what she could totally accumulate from the, um. Uh, what the, the policy manual says for carryover and, and such, however, um. Previous administrations, as far as the mayor and, and council that was there, I don't know what was. Done that day, for that day, I didn't know what was, uh, done from the previous mayor or whatever, so it was documented, it was moved forward. I can say this, going forward with employees, I can make sure that that doesn't occur again, but. The bottom line is, she had two-thirty-seven-point-five on there, and, uh, that's what she closed out from the system and what she left with, so. Um, you know, we, I know it's been discussed, uh, internally, it's been discussed with the accounting system, it's been discussed with the city attorney. And the recommendation is to close out the, the, uh, the balance of, um, what's paid to her, so. It's an expenditure of funds and we'll need a motion to do it.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, pay Sharon the two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-point-five hours that she gives out.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion by, uh, Menson, second by Saracen, uh, any other discussion on this?
Do you think we need to take this as an opportunity to review policy and, and make sure we're all.
Absolutely, I agree. Moving forward, we can ensure it doesn't occur a second time, but that's, um, that doesn't change what has occurred in the past. Any other discussion on this? Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Um, would you add that to the, uh, to the overall item and, uh, we'll get that taken care of.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item, uh, fourteen I, which is the updated hiring process for the, uh, city clerk position. This is, uh, again, I made a general statement earlier, thanking the hiring committee, um, for the other council members and the, the members, uh, present today. Uh, we are in the final process of, uh, doing interviews with the potential, uh, members, uh, or the potential candidates for clerk. Uh, we hope to complete that this week, uh, we are on schedule to do that. And, uh, then we will be moving them forward with some more administrative testing and hope to have a recommendation for council very soon, the process I think is going well. And, um, but, uh, before I close that out, I'll defer to Councilman Trump, Councilman Saracen for their comments as well.
Yeah, I've been pleased with the process to this point and the candidates that we've had interviews with, and I look forward to finishing that out and collaborating on what that right decision is.
That's my end.
Okay, very good, so we should have a decision for you very soon to, to, to move on. Uh, any other comments?
Thank you guys for doing the right, yeah, thanks.
Are we gonna have a closed meeting, discuss salaries on our strategy?
No, that's, that is an item that has come up, uh, whether we, um, bring a candidate all the way up to the point of a conditional job offer and then bring that final candidate, uh, to council for approval? Or whether or not, uh, we bring that, uh, person to the job offer and then go into closed session, um, for the council to do, to do a review and make that decision. Um, I think it's an, um, administratively HR, uh, level item that we could do a closed session for. Um, but it'll be the pleasure of the council as to which way you want to go on that, and I'm looking at you two, cause we're, we're on the committee, but, um.
Do you feel it's a closed session necessary?
Uh, I think you could do either one, we could go up to a point of a conditional job offer, which is right prior to the, um, drug testing, basically. Um, saying, you know, you'll be hired if, you know, you meet this criteria and that would be where it'd be. If there's obviously a clear choice, you know, I think you could do that, um. If there's, you know, some, uh, a couple candidates that are, um, neck and neck, I think closed session is certainly an option, so. Not necessarily a decision that needs to be made right now, but I probably should be thinking about it, what you prefer.
It's one of the options, yeah.
It is, I think that, um, we, we certainly have a, uh, administrative and legal right to go into closed sessions for sometimes something like that, since it. Um, concerns HR and, and privileged information on those applications and things, so. Any other comments? Okay, very none, then I would entertain, oh, no sheriff's report, I'll make a note of that, and I'll see if, uh, um, guy, can we see if we can get that manually, just so we can add it to the file? I'm sure they have it.
They usually always send it whether the deputy shows up or not, but I'll, I'll check on it.
Okay, we'll, okay, uh, with no other comments then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please?
Show move.
Move by Trump?
I'll second.
And second by Menson, and, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries, thank you all for attending this evening, have a good evening.